Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
President.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here. I'd like to begin the council comments with a rather sad note. Last week, we lost former Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department Chief Charles West. His funeral was this morning and I attended on behalf of the city. Actually, I learned a great deal about Chief West that I hadn't known, including the fact, I don't know how many people knew him, he had actually served as the Volunteer Fire Department Chief between 1990 and 1994. He was, earlier in his career, both a volunteer with the Volunteer Fire Department and employed as a career firefighter with the former Tacoma Park Fire Department. So he actually did both of those things. And he remained in the Volunteer Fire Department for 54 years until his death last week. After his term as chief at Tacoma Park, he moved on to Hillendale and served as a volunteer with the Hillendale Fire Department. I also found out that he had, during his career with the fire service, the Tacoma Park Fire Service, back when we had that, he also served as the city's official photographer and developed his pictures in a darkroom that was actually in the fire station. I know that people were very interested in those pictures and there's, I think, there's some discussion of maybe we can get some of those older pictures. But he was, he was a very kind and compassionate person, very low-key, but he was absolutely dedicated to the fire service and we will all miss him.
Couple of things that I had brought to the council's attention previously. One was for the House and Garden Tour, which is coming up next weekend on Sunday, there is a possibility we could hire a shuttle, but that is, it would have to be a private agency outside of Ride On, as apparently Ride On doesn't allow their drivers and buses to be hired. The quote I've gotten is about $500 per shuttle and if two shuttles are needed, then that would be about $1,000. And I don't know if the council wants to add this to the agenda to discuss tonight, but if we don't make a decision on this, we probably really don't have a chance to influence it until next year.
I don't understand your question.
This is the shuttle bus that would circulate from the metro to through Old Town, down Carroll Avenue where the House and Garden Tour is taking place, and back to the metro.
So is the question whether or not we want to spend money on it?
Yes.
Or whether or not we want to use our city van?
Well, that's an interesting suggestion.
In terms of spending money on it, the council is scheduled to hold a discussion at the beginning of our discussion of the budget about the whole issue of donations to nonprofit groups. And since we have not made a policy on this, I know we have, on an ad hoc basis, decided to provide funding for a couple of organizations, but, and the House and Garden Tour was one of those that we provided a cash donation toward. It might be more appropriate to let us have the overall policy discussion first and then, as appropriate, deal with it for next year.
It's really the council's decision, not mine individually. I was first informed about this about a month ago at a committee meeting of the Business Association, and it would better tie together the business community with the House and Garden Tour, which I know this council has made both of those things a priority.
Is it an in-kind support of the nonprofit with the bus, using the city bus? Is that an issue or is that possible?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I'm not sure if there's an issue or not. I'd probably defer to the city attorney. Obviously, the city, you know, has made decisions to co-sponsor a variety of events. The House and Garden Tour, I'm not sure that I would see providing shuttle services any different than maybe some of the co-sponsorships you've already done, or the in-kind contributions we make in terms of, you know, trash pickup, police services, things of that nature.
Because we did use the bus for the funeral service, right?
Right. Well, actually, I misspoke. Apparently, we ended up using the van, but yeah, we did. We did it as a community service because so many elderly people at Victory Tower cannot drive.
Can we look into that and leave it up to the city manager if it's an appropriate thing to do?
If I may ask, if this is something the council would like to support, maybe just to give us some flexibility, if perhaps you could basically provide me with direction to either use the, you know, one of the city vehicles, or if it makes more sense from an economic standpoint, or being able to provide better service, to pursue the options that Councilmember Austin Lane has identified, perhaps we could put a dollar amount, a cap, just to give us some flexibility, because I think as she accurately pointed out, the House and Garden Tour, I believe, is this Sunday?
Yes.
So we're kind of running out of time and there really wouldn't be an opportunity to bring something back before you.
If I had to propose a cap, I would suggest the $1,000, because that's, based on the one quote I've gotten from a private company, that's what it was. And then before the private company issue came up, I had gotten a quote from what the Folk Festival had paid in previous years, and that was around 800 for two shuttles.
And if using the city bus exceeds that limit, I would like to report back on the particular.
I don't think Councilmember Siemens is likely to exceed that. My concern is, you know, being able to find a driver and whether it's more economical to hire two buses perhaps, because there might be such interest, and if we're trying to shuttle people, that may actually provide better service. I'm just trying to leave as many options open if this is something the council would like to pursue.
I guess I continue to have a concern. The council did talk about a contribution which we did make to the House and Garden Tour, because we don't really have a policy in place, but I, if it's a contribution of funding, I continue to have that concern.
If I can just clarify that this is mainly to benefit the Old Town businesses, not the House and Garden Tour?
That's right. This is, this is in order to connect the House and Garden Tour, which we clearly do support, with the businesses that could serve meals to people before or after, or give them refreshments in the middle. And both the Business Association and Historic Tacoma are very interested in this. If it doesn't fly this year, or if we do it with a city bus this year, and next year something else would be appropriate, that's certainly fine to pursue it that way.
I could agree for up to $1,000 for the city manager to have the discretion.
Plus tax.
Okay. The second thing that I wanted to bring to people's attention is Safe Tacoma, and I believe that a board member is here from Safe Tacoma. They have now been granted money through the District of Columbia Government to carry on additional programming that would raise awareness of crime, prevent crime, empower the community around safety issues. And as this council has been very supportive of that, including earmarking $75,000 in our current year budget to make it happen, I wanted to make sure that the council was aware that this now is something DC has done as a grant to a community nonprofit. Tacoma DC Neighborhood Association is the entity that is getting the money. They have been around for decades, previously as Planned Tacoma, and I feel confident that the connection between DC and Maryland exists in spades. I also feel confident that our police departments are cooperating, and that this would be programming in addition to what our police departments would be providing. I know that we've reviewed the issue of hiring a crime analyst that Chief Rucucci has proposed, and that does seem to be something the council is supportive of in the upcoming budget, but the issue remains as to what this council intends to do with the $75,000 that's in our current budget. And I would propose it going to the entity that has now been formed, that Gail Fisher-Stewart has agreed to be in charge of programming, and I think that there are Public Safety Committee members who have reviewed this issue and feel very strongly about it, as well as the Board of Safe Tacoma having a number of people from both DC and Maryland on it. So that's just what I wanted to apprise the council of.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I had a number of issues tonight, or things to announce tonight. One is, this Saturday on May 5th, from 10:30 to 12:30, the city council, and my colleagues on the council, and I will be walking through Ward 4. We're going to begin at Richie, on Richie Avenue at Piney Branch Road, and progress on through Ward 4, down Maple Avenue, and end up at the Piney Branch Elementary School. This will be an opportunity for all of the residents of Richie, Oswego, Geneva, and Maple, and Lee Avenues, to meet the council, discuss anything that they would like to discuss, issues they have, or thanks for all the things the city council has done for them. Now, we're going to end up at the Piney Branch Elementary School parking lot, where the Tacoma Park Community Action Group is going to be holding a Children First Day event. There are going to be speakers from, our Mayor Porter will be there, Valerie Irvin from the County Council, and many other people will be there to talk about some of the children's issues and how we can do a better job of educating our young people. There will also be a lot of games, arts, crafts, face painting, moon bounce, things for the kids to do. And that's going to be at the Piney Branch Elementary School from 11:30, no, 12 o'clock until 3 o'clock. That's from noon until 3 this Saturday. Another item I had is I wanted to let the community know that this year Jim Jarboe is celebrating his 50th anniversary as the, with the Tacoma Park Volunteer Fire Department, and he will be the grand marshal in the Fourth of July Parade this year. We, a number of the members of the council, went to the Volunteer Fire Awards banquet and saw that Chief Jarboe is still very active. He's, in fact, he was playing Deal or No Deal that night. It was a, it was a nice event, and we thank him for his many years of service, and we'll do that many more times this year. I wanted to also thank the old Tacoma Business Association for the cleanup that they did in the Old Town area, including the District of Columbia, our Laurel Avenue area, and on down to Tacoma Junction last Saturday. Did a very, very nice cleanup, planted some flowers, and I thank them for that effort. And then lastly, I would just like to, well, not lastly, I have two things. I'm sorry. I wanted to ask the city manager if we could do some programming for the young adults who live along, well, within Tacoma Park, but there's many that live along Maple Avenue and Lee Avenue. We have asked our police department to discourage people from just hanging out in front of the stores on Maple Avenue, but I think it's important that we provide a space for them to congregate and socialize, and maybe have some adult supervision, but not something that would, would not have to be necessarily heavy programming, but maybe providing some music. I thought that the plaza area right outside the community center here, to the right of the community center, near the Grand Avenue entrance, is an area that we can now use because we have completed the stairway, so we have the second digress, and I thought that might be a location that we could offer for the, for the young people to congregate. And then lastly, and I promise this is the last one, so we'll make it two-part. Pat Lovelace sent his regrets that he wasn't able to join us tonight. He's a resident that normally speaks and comes to all of our council meetings. He went to the impeach Bush rally that was in Washington DC. He was, in fact, at the top of DA, and he's now suffering from difficulties with his backbone, and he did mention a request that he would like the city to consider budgeting some money for a new backbone for him this year. But one thing that he wanted me to remind the community is that on May 1st, I believe that's Tuesday night, the, the city tomorrow, the city is going to be holding a healthcare forum, and that, I believe, starts at 7 o'clock, right here in the Azalea Room at the community center.
Actually, it's in this room.
Oh, it's in the council chambers, or the auditorium, we call it now. I guess Pat would have done a better job. I'll sign off, but please come to the healthcare forum tomorrow night.
If I could just follow up your last announcement. I appreciate your mentioning that. If people are concerned about the issue of the hospital's most recent announcement about purchasing land, the hospital president will be at that forum tomorrow evening, and it's a good opportunity for people to discuss with him any concerns they might have, and also any ideas they might have with this committee that the council set up to look into those kinds of issues. So I would second your encouraging people to come to that meeting. And I believe that's why it was moved to this room, because it's anticipated there will be a good turnout. Anybody else?
The teen engagement issue. You know, we have a new teen coordinator, and when I was doing recreation, it seemed like a significant portion of what the teen coordinators do is outreach to get to the teens, to get the teens to come to the program. It seems like a small part of it ends up being actually the development of the program. So we might think about ways that we could augment the teen outreach to get people engaged and involved. The Elm, Auburn, Lincoln Traffic Circle Reduced T Intersection has finally been paved. The neighbors are ecstatic. Well, some of them are. Neighbors are mostly happy. Compliance gets better every day, which is nice. People are getting used to the circle. Some signs have shown up in the circle to tell those who've never seen a traffic circle in their life what they should do when they come upon the traffic circle, and for the most part, people are complying with the signs.
So fewer and fewer are driving over the middle of it?
Well, the signs are sort of in the way of driving over the middle of it now. I understand that there were maybe some breakaway signs or some other signage things. I don't think that these are the permanent signs. I hope these aren't permanent signs. They're not particularly attractive. But, but anyway, the effect of slowing the traffic down has been very good, and we're very happy about that. And we're hoping that now that there are signs that tell people what to do, that the police department will come and do some enforcement for those people who haven't caught on yet. That's you, Chief. And then another sign that we got is, of course, as soon as the traffic circle came into being, the real estate agents were some of the people who were really ecstatic, and they had been putting real estate agent signs all over the traffic circle, and the community started having this conversation about visual clutter, and how much they hate having real estate signs in their yard. And I said I would ask the city manager if it is, if people, can you put signs in the public right of way at any time that you want to in regards to the traffic circle itself?
No.
Is it possible?
Yeah, we've actually dealt with this before. If it's a commercial sign, it is not supposed to be placed in the right of way.
Okay. Because it's pretty cluttersome. And then people who are having real estate signs, people who unfortunately or fortunately live on the corner also, I guess, get a lot of traffic from real estate signs. And they would like to know what they're legally allowed to do with the signs, and whether or not they're allowed to remove those signs. And the people who live on the corner of the houses have said that they've actually, people get confused, and they see the sign, and they think there's an open house at their house, and have had people walk into their house while they were like napping shirtless on the couch. That was probably more than you needed to know, but it made the story really more exciting. Okay, so they can't do that. That's good to know. Catherine Tunis and I went on a walk in Long Branch Creek area along the proposed Montgomery County Path area, and it was, it was very enlightening. And as we got towards the end of Long Branch Creek, in between Ward 2 and Ward 6, that's you Doug, there's an area where there's all these private property signs that are up, and they actually go across the entire swath of the creek. And looking at the map, they can't, that can't all be private property going across there. People are claiming private areas, and I think that the reason they want to do that is so that we won't notice that they have dumped lawn mowers, toilet tanks, water heaters. They're clearing the back of their property and shoving all the debris of the clear right over the edge and into the creek. And it's basically those, there's a place called Glen Side Court, there's like four houses along there, and it's along the back side there. And there's a paper street there, too, and there's a shed right in the middle of the paper street. So that was somewhat interesting. I think you should take the walk with Catherine.
Yeah, I've seen some of the stuff shoved there, and I wonder if that's, there's some code violation issues that we should follow up on if the miscreants, if the stuff can be traced back to them.
It's pretty obvious that they sliced it all down.
Yeah, well, it sounds like Ward 6.
Oh. They're little pretty houses. I went around and looked down from the other side.
Whatever's going on inside of them, it's not so pretty.
And my last question is about the quilt. Is the quilt coming back to the community center anytime soon?
It's been found.
I know it's been found.
Yes. I believe that we're looking to find an appropriate place, but it should be returned.
Okay. Because I have a constituent who asks me every week.
Yeah, I just have two quick things. I just wanted to give a follow-up to my question last week about the bottom of the 300 block of Lincoln Avenue that was no longer a street, but was more like a streambed. I just wanted to update folks that WSSC was contacted, and they said, oh, they had checked it out, and it was not a leak, it was not theirs, and they had closed the case, and so they came back out again and in fact tested for chlorine and said, oops, it's ours. So I think this was just another example of WSSC not providing proper follow-up, and I would still request that we get an update on the various cases where people have questions about WSSC follow-ups, so that the council can get a little bit better idea of how we might want to approach a better relationship with them on a number of issues. And the second thing I wanted to do was just to mention that I know at least the mayor and I went to an event on last week that was very nice. It was a community tribute to our former state senator, Ida Rubin. Many hundreds of people showed up for that, and it was a very nice evening, and people talked about a lot of the aspects of what she had done in her 30 years of service for the members of our community. And I just wanted to say how thoroughly nice that was, and I felt that there was some real appreciation for what she had done.
All right. We are now going to move on to the adoption of minutes. We have in front of us the minutes of March 26th, April 9th, and April 16th.
Move adoption.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? All those in favor of adopting the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes are adopted. I've got a couple of these. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. This is the time set aside for comments on items that are not on our regular meeting agenda. If you have a comment on an item that's on our regular meeting agenda, we would ask if you'd hold that comment until we get to that item. When you come forward, either at this time or during the regular meeting agenda items, we'd ask that you identify yourself, and if you could keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. Are there any public comments? Yes. If you would go up to the podium there.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Mrs. Joanne Gordon. I'm Ward 6 tenant. I am here because I want the council to take note of the problems I and others are experiencing in rental property. I have discussed many of my concerns with Councilmember Barry, who has also come to my home. However, I have, since complaining about mice and other issues, I have been harassed and threatened. I had to get in the tini to write my landlord a letter, and I have here copies of complaining of mice since July 2003. And I had called the police and had Officer Roush come to my home, but when I came to collect a report of that complaint, there was nothing. This was very upsetting to me, because in the past, I've had some problems with the police in forms of abuse, and I had also had to file a suit in 98. However, if I, I am now a widow. If I can't at least have some respect or some assistance from the police, where do I turn? I have brought several of my documents, and I would really like the members to take a look at what people like me have been experiencing.
Yes, well, Mrs. Gordon, I'm very familiar with the problems that you've had there at your residence, and you're in good company tonight because our chief of police is there with some of his top executives, and I'm sure that they would be very happy to look at the documents that you have and to inquire further into the problems you've been having at the residence, and will help you to get resolution to your problems.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to? Yes, sir?
I'm Sarah Green, Advisory Neighborhood Commissioner for BO1 in the District of Columbia. And as you know, the community I represent and the community you represent meet at Tacoma Metro Station and on Eastern Avenue. I'm calling, I'm here because of Safe Tacoma, and we've been here before, and we've talked. And I'm very frustrated, and this is the same thing exactly that I said to my own city government a month or two ago. And I said, I'm very frustrated, because you made a commitment that you were going to match $75,000 to what the city of Tacoma Park agreed to fund with Safe Tacoma. And we stood very firm with the District of Columbia, and we talked with lawmakers, and we kept, you know, the mayor, and we kept calling back and calling back, and we just wouldn't go away. And we now have our $75,000. What I am saying to you is, the District of Columbia Government is, needs to fill, to meet its commitments, and I think the city of Tacoma Park needs to do that, too. We have been meeting now for months under the assumption that we were going to have a $150,000 program. And we have now been told that that isn't going to happen, that the city of Tacoma Park has other plans for that money. And with all due respect, I think, I think you should live up to your commitment on this one. And with all due respect, I think you should live up to your commitment on this one. First of all, it's going to be a good program and you're going to get something for your money. And second of all, you're also going to get an improved relationship with the District of Columbia, which I thought was also part of doing this. There is an irony here, and I'm sure you're seeing it. And that is that part of the impetus for Safe Tacoma was improved cross-jurisdictional relationships. And now in not funding it, you are actually decreasing. You're actually in a minus situation on that relationship. You know, in many ways, it might have been better had you not agreed to do the program in the first place. Because now a lot of us are looking at and saying, now, wait a minute. I very much urge you to do this. I think it's in everybody's best interest to do this. I think we can work together on this. I look forward to working with you on this. This is one of several issues that are working with... Our neighbors are working together. The Tacoma Metro Station is another issue. There will be more issues, historic preservation issues, business development issues. It'll go on and on. And I think we need to continue this together. Quick question. Are you going to be dealing with this issue tonight?
We're not going to be dealing with it tonight, as you know. At the point at which we hired a new police chief, he'd made an alternate proposal for that money. And that whole issue will come before the council and the discussion of the budget. We begin those discussions next week. And we will complete the discussions by the end of May. So by that time, we should have an answer for you.
Can I just get clarification on that? In the current budget, the city directed that $75,000 to be spent on Safe Tacoma. Is that right?
There was $75,000 and still is included in this year's budget for cross-jurisdictional cooperation. Truthfully, I don't think the council had substantive discussions about how that was to be used. But that money's in this year's budget with the exception of maybe $500 or some amount that has already been released to Safe Tacoma Incorporated to reimburse the organization for costs they incurred prior to the D.C. funding. Just one reminder for the council is regardless of what your decision is, but certainly any money that would be given to any nonprofit, there needs to be a contract. I know you went through that same extensive process with the District of Columbia. But the city council would actually need to essentially enter into a grant with the organization and review the scope of work and the deliverables and to make sure that you're comfortable with what would be proposed.
I wonder if the city manager could clarify the question of whether there were additional plans, if there were alternate plans for that sum of money.
I think my proposed budget for FY08 assumes that $75,000, if you will, would be allocated towards the hiring of a crime analyst as discussed with the council, I believe, back in March. In terms of the funding in this year's budget, there's really been no specific discussion about what was to be done. And Chief Rakucci, it's not in the process of hiring a crime analyst until the council basically gives him the... Gives he and I the direction to move forward with the hiring of an analyst, so...
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I just want to take this chance to reiterate my position on this, and that is that Chief Rakucci and his department is charged with policing in this city. And so I'm not interested in a nonprofit organization doing actual policing work such as, you know, coordinating the cross-jurisdictional communications. But I do recognize that the city council made a commitment last year. And I would certainly be interested in hearing from Safe Tacoma what... How you would think about spending that money or what's left of the money. And something that would be public safety oriented but not something that is a responsibility of our police department.
With all due respect, if I may respond. First of all, there are lots of things in the Safe Tacoma discussions that we had. This is not a policing program. I mean, this is a community outreach and communication program that involves, you know, some data issues. But that's truly... It is truly not a policing program. And we're looking at youth issues, youth involvement. We're looking at working with the business community to, you know... There's a lot of things that are not policing. And that's the first thing. The second thing is that we literally are about to get our check within the week. And we are being asked to give some very specific information to the District of Columbia. And this is not a situation at this point where we can say to them, well, maybe we'll have $75,000 in the City of Tacoma Park as they promised, or maybe we won't. We'll know in a month. And the problem... The reason the problem here is that the District of Columbia has done what it committed to do. And I think that the City of Tacoma Park, I really think that we need to know this very quickly. And a month is really, with all due respect, too long to wait because we have got to move forward. We've been doing this for a year and we now literally have a signed agreement with the District of Columbia. So I guess I'm trying, you know, to say this in a neighborly way because I have a very strong affection and a sense of neighborliness about you and have been working with you for a long time and want to continue to do that. And I thank you for your attention to this. And I simply would be remiss if I didn't say what was on my mind with this. Because we're going to have a good program. And we really need to have the City of Tacoma Park engaged fully in it. Thank you again.
If I can just clarify, I want to make sure that I understand this correctly and that everybody else does, too. There is the $75,000 that was in this current year's budget. Only $500 of it has been committed. And if the city manager could clarify whether you made any assumptions about whether that was going to be unspent and rolled over and any assumptions you made about next year's budget. And then the discussion of next year's budget for the police department is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, May 17th. That could change. But that in no way presupposes anything about the current $75,000 as far as I know.
If I understand your question, Councilmember Williamson, if I missed something, please let me know. Yeah, I think I don't remember the exact dollar. Ms. Green may be able to help me. But it was roughly $500 or so that I think was your articles of incorporation and very similar things. That has already been paid to Safe Tacoma Incorporated because that would not be reimbursable from the district's grant. The other monies are basically sitting in the police department. Given that at the time I was doing my budget, there had not been any discussion on the part of the council, my assumption was that truthfully those funds would be unspent and just go back to fund balance. Obviously, if that decision is different, we just correct our estimates. They're exactly that. In terms of the FY08 budget, essentially that $75,000 that had been in a contract line item essentially in the Chiefs Division in the police department budget was assumed to be used for the hiring of a crime analyst.
Right. So that $75,000 in this year's budget is still there?
That is correct.
Just one thing. I don't want to prolong the discussion beyond what we can really get done tonight. But I would like to see the city manager and police chief, who have been very heavily involved in this issue last year and at the current time. I'd like to see them work with the organization and take steps to make a similar grant. I would like to remind Sarah that this was initiated by the City of Tacoma Park and the money was put in our budget if matching funds were found. So it is, I believe, incumbent on this council to now allocate that money to... For the purposes it was intended. And I would look to the city manager and police chief to make sure it was done in an accountable fashion.
If I may suggest to Ms. Green, I don't know if you're the right party, but would it be possible to get a copy of the draft grant agreement that you're working with the district on?
It's sub-draft.
Is it executed? Okay, I'm sorry.
And actually, I always said something... Well, I have something in my inbox that I can send today as well.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie.
Mayor Porter, I think that before we can just authorize the city manager to release that money, I do think it's important that we see what the plan is at this point in time. Because what was described tonight is markedly different than what was discussed a year ago. And I think the council should participate in that decision.
It sounds from the discussion I'm hearing that we need another discussion by the council to include the information that the city manager has requested. And if we can get that from you all, and then the council will make a decision as to how to proceed. I will go ahead and put that on the agenda as soon as I can. I'm not sure because we're moving into budget season with the next meeting. I'm not sure how soon we can do it. But I will, out of... In response to your concern about timeliness, I will see if I can get it on as soon as we can.
Yeah, with all due respect, please. I'm not sure if it's possible that if we wait another month, we could be saving the body of the $75,000 from Mr. Obama.
Okay, I will try and do it sooner than that. But I think the city manager brings up a good point, that we can't hand out the money without certain things being done. And so we would need to make sure that those things were done. My suggestion to you would be that you get together with the city manager and so that you understand what the city's requirements are and that she sort of understands what you've got. And so that way we can... All of that back and forth can be eliminated and that will facilitate the council's discussion of this.
I'd be happy to do that. We had a number of meetings with Ms. Matthews. I thought that it was very clear what was going on. We had a lot of meetings, okay? Would like to get beyond the meetings.
I think that... I think where we are now, there is an agreement, a signed agreement. And that would be what the city council would want to review. And hopefully the mayor can get it on our next agenda in order to review this in a very timely fashion.
Thank you. We really very much appreciate this. Thank you.
All right. We're still in the public comment period. Are there any other comments?
Mayor, before we move on, I wonder if just for a second, we might go back to Mrs. Gordon's testimony. I think there are two issues, Mrs. Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong. One is the police matter, which I think we can resolve. The second is a rental property inspection matter. And this involves the roaches and the mice. When I visited you, I believe it was last September, I saw evidence and immediately reported it out to the Housing Department, which reported it to the county that does the housing inspections for rental properties for the city. And I think it's instructive because now it's May, you still have the mice problem. And I have seen documentation that suggests a rather heavy fine is about to be assessed on the property owner for not taking care of the mice in a timely fashion and an appropriate way. But still, I'm surprised and upset that it has taken this long to get the problem eradicated. And I wonder if this is, of course, in light in not only my intervention on your behalf but also a county council person who you also spoke with and called her contacts at the county. It shouldn't take all of this effort to get rid of the mice and the roaches. And the fact that they are here and so much of a chronic problem suggests that the system may not be working for you, Mrs. Gordon, and others in your neighborhood the way that it should. And I wonder, City Manager Matthews, if you might inquire as to, you know, the nature of this particular issue. There may be other facts that I don't have at my disposal. I know the investigation is underway, but it seems like it's taking a very, very long time.
I also had an inspection last Monday. And I've not got a report, but here I got a letter that I should move items from my porch. These items I've always had, well, at least since my husband died, I've had most of this stuff there. And no one complained about it.
Right. I think the problem is that the landlord has not taken the corrective action that he should. This is maybe part of it. But the other part is to have a professional exterminator come there and take care of it. And we need to see that that, in fact, has happened. All right? Thank you.
We will now move on to the city manager's update.
Yes, I'll just make this very quick. I know you're running a little bit behind schedule. I just wanted to remind the council that the first meeting of the Joint County-City Revenue Sharing Task Force will be held tomorrow morning. The initial agenda basically calls for the parties to sort of get to know each other, provide some history, make sure everyone's sort of on a level playing field in terms of their knowledge of the issues of tax duplication. And then both sides will basically kind of talk about what they're hoping to get out of it. These meetings will be professionally facilitated and there is a co-chair from both the county side and from the municipalities. So certainly as that process moves forward, I'll keep the council updated about how those discussions are going. The other item I just wanted to share with you, and I'll have some more information for you hopefully next week, concerns the tax rebates. I think the council's aware that you... The city matches basically a tax credit that is given by both the state and the county for those who meet certain income requirements and whose properties meet certain assessment criteria. Even during my three years with the city, the city council has approved increases in the match. And as you may recall, I believe it was last summer, due to some changes in state and county provisions, the amount that the city was expending for those tax rebates had risen quite dramatically. And I believe Mr. Hobbs, in my absence last summer, had brought this issue forward to the council. I just talked to the finance staff earlier today and basically we got the new figures in. And once again, it's a pretty sizable increase in the amount. And we're still sort of looking at the data and trying to figure out if that's being triggered by further changes in the county and state eligibility criteria or what exactly has changed. But I just wanted to give you, the council, some idea of the dollar amount because it would have a budgetary impact for this year and may be an item we want to discuss for next year as well. In FY06, we spent about $103,000 on the city's share of the tax rebates or tax credits. And that benefited about 144 recipients. Based on the data we have so far for FY07, the number of recipients would go up to about 169. And the amount of the credits would be about just under $141,000. So this is something that has continued to rise quite dramatically. In this year's budget, we only have $75,000 budgeted for this. So the overage would be just under $66,000. So I'm not asking you to make a decision tonight. I'd like to get a little bit more information and figure out kind of what is making things change quite so dramatically. So I'll be bringing hopefully some information back for you next week. It will be an item we may want to have some discussion about during the budget work sessions because my proposed budget included about $110,000. We had put a little bit of a hedge over what we had expended in FY06. But obviously, this is something that is increasing rather dramatically. And I do think the staff needs to provide the council with some information as we discuss this issue during the budget process.
Okay. Yes.
There's been a change in one of the caps. And the information is on the state website that describes the program. It describes how it changed this year.
Okay. Yeah, and I think the county has also been making some changes. So I think what we're seeing, staff's best guess, and I appreciate that, Councilmember Clay, is some of the eligibility criteria has been changing over the last few years as everyone's struggling, I think, with rising property values. The other thing that our finance staff thinks may also be happening in terms of the number of eligible participants is as some buildings have gone condo. Buildings that used to be rental are now owner-occupied. And that may have actually increased the pool of those who are eligible for the credit as well. So we're going to try to spend the next week sorting through the data and hopefully have some information for you next week.
That would be very helpful. Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? All right. We'll move on to the next item. We have a couple of interviews this evening. And I apologize to those who've been waiting. We're running a bit behind schedule. First person who is scheduled to be interviewed is Jane Johnson. Is she here? Don't see anybody. Don't know. All right. How about Jason Crist?
Here.
You want to come sit up here at the table?
Sure.
You're being interviewed for a position on the emergency preparedness... You're being interviewed for a position on the Emergency Preparedness Committee. We very much appreciate your being here, and we apologize for running overtime.
Oh, not a problem.
And we do have the information that you sent us, which I found very interesting. But I'd like to actually start off just by asking you why you're interested in participating in the Emergency Preparedness Committee and what you think you could bring to it.
Okay. It's a fair question. First of all, I'll talk about my interest. Interest is sort of a long-term, maybe over the last ten or fifteen years. I'm originally a political science major when I was at Penn State, and I studied government. And that sort of grew into an interest in international politics and international relations, specifically in the area of the Middle East. And that sort of further developed into an interest in terrorism, counterterrorism, evolved further into emergency preparedness in the back end post nine eleven. I traveled to Egypt, and I received a Department of Defense scholarship to learn Arabic language and study Arab culture and travel around the Middle East and sort of kind of understand these, these concepts more, more in depth. When I came back to the United States, graduated from Penn State with my policy degree, I sort of shelved that as a personal interest and pursued my law career. So I really didn't, you know, use that sort of interest I had and apply that. I thought that this would be an excellent way to sort of merge my personal interest in, in, you know, emergency preparedness with, you know, community service, which I think is, is the ultimate goal here. I'm a recent transplant from Baltimore. I've been in Tacoma Park since August of two thousand and five, and it's a great community. And I think this would sort of a natural fit with my interests. More specifically, I think, I don't necessarily have a lot of experience in emergency preparedness, but a lot of what I do on a day-to-day basis, I'm an attorney, I'm an Epstein, Becker, and Green, I'm a regulatory, health regulatory attorney, has sort of cross-application. A lot of what I do is solve fairly complicated problems, you know, with creative solutions. And I think that's exactly what, what this is. I think the Emergency Preparedness Committee has a very difficult task, you know, a very important one, and I think one that I can certainly contribute to. As far as experience goes, I certainly categorize myself as a layperson. I'm not a fireman, I don't work for the city, and I don't have experience as a police. But I think a layperson brings a certain asset to a committee that's primarily composed of individuals who are sort of already a part of the process. But I do have some experience. I actually helped draft the governor, the governor's handbook, the legal, Emergency Preparedness Handbook, that the governor of Maryland would use in the event he would need to respond to catastrophic or some sort of unpredictable or event. So I know sort of the legal side of it. I don't necessarily have much experience in the other thing, but I'm willing to learn. I'm a very resourceful person, and I'm pretty dedicated to, to the mission of the committee.
Well, I appreciate that. And I did notice in the letter that you sent us that you did talk about your participation in the emergency preparedness plan used by the state. And I think that actually would be useful to us. One of the things that we are going to have to do in any, in the case of any emergency like that is we would need to coordinate with other levels of government. And so, the familiarity with the, with the state's sort of blueprint for dealing with those things could be quite useful.
Well, just to clarify a point, it's not the plan I worked on, it's the handbook that the governor, legal handbook the governor would use. In other words, this-
The distinction is lost on me.
The, the plan would sort of be the soup to nuts, what do we do, who's in charge, when? This basically, I wouldn't say constricts, but defines the power of the governor. In other words, if I need to, as Abraham Lincoln did, take control of Baltimore City, do I have the constitutional authority to do so? The same would apply. It has sort of application in many different levels, but that's sort of one example. It also defines the powers of the different administrative bodies and their roles, but it doesn't necessarily define the plan itself. Nonetheless, I agree, it would be something very useful.
Yes, I, I can see that, 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 as you describe it, would be useful. Are there questions from other members of the council?
I'm so happy that you applied for this committee.
Oh, thank you.
As your neighbor, you know, I get to talk to you every once in a while and know a little bit about you. But, you know, I didn't know that much about you before I read your resume, and I was actually really excited to see how much healthcare background that you had. And I knew you were an attorney, but I really didn't know what you did as an attorney. And I do think one of the critical issues that's, that the city will face in the event of any kind of disaster or emergency is how we plan and prepare for these various kind of health-related issues, health-related evacuation issues, disability-related evacuation issues, rehousing issues. And I will say that, you know, having, having only spent sixty days at FEMA, I think being an attorney would be a really good thing in terms of helping to prepare the people that we have as volunteer responders and sort of how those relationships go and who has the authority to do what, and making sure that Tacoma Park's plan actually fits in really well within those, within those authorities. That seems to be one of the significant issues that we've learned in the last couple of years is, is that we have to really understand what the authorities are, and we have to know what our authorities are so we know when to, when to act. Because a lot of what happened in the, in the Katrina issue was that, you know, people kind of didn't know who, who was doing what, when, and how. They didn't know how to communicate with each other, they didn't know what they could do. So I, I think that is a really valuable skill that you, that you bring. And I, like I said, I'm just really happy that you agreed to be on a city committee.
Yes, I agree. Thank you for volunteering for the committee. As I look through your resume, I see a great deal of education and experience that I think directly relates to the work the committee does. And I, I'm really, I think you bring a, characteristics that are different than some of the other committee members, and I think that just helps to broaden the base of what they can do and how well they can accomplish their work. So I thank you for, for volunteering and look forward to your appointment.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I have a question, sort of clarification from the clerk. I noticed on the committee roster that the chair, her time is up, has been up? Has, has she expressed interest in reapplying? Do we have any more appointments coming up? Is that an automatic reappointment?
She, she has expressed an interest in, in, to me, so, I think, I was waiting for the other applicant to come forward to have them be prepared together. I was thinking you would interview her because she has an internal house. So there we are.
So, so at this point, it would be to appoint this gentleman and reappoint her, and then we would be?
Still three short.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there other questions from the council? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your volunteering, and I certainly appreciate the, the skills that you have and think they would be quite useful. We will, I think we were, were we waiting for anyone else to go ahead and make the appointments? Okay. So we will then go ahead and schedule those, I think, within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. Appreciate your volunteering. All right. The next item on the agenda. No, no, they are not. They're here. The next item is the ordinance authorizing the purchase of six mobile data computers for the police department. Good evening.
You have the background in front of you. The six mobile data computers is a part of our full implementation to go on with the record management system used by the Montgomery County Police Department. The purchase of these six is a continuing program that we want to start each year replacing six. They have a lifetime of about four years now, and we want to, on each budget cycle from here on out, replace them on a four-year basis. These six will bring us up to where we need to be to be on with the record management system and with the new cars we've purchased. And this will just be replacements, and will continue each year. We will come before you on the every four years to replace. That way, we're not coming in with a big purchase at one time. And what I want is to have a planning each year with equipment replacement, and that's what this is tonight for those.
Okay. Is there any questions for the council? Oh, I'm sorry, really?
I think you actually answered this question, but I just want to be sure. One of the issues is that they're used by Montgomery County Police. Will they be used in the future? Is Montgomery County planning any change in the system?
No, the whole, when we, one of the first decisions that I made when I took over is, pending was, we had money in the CIP to go on to the record management system of Montgomery. This is a new system they've just implemented. By us going in on, we will be able in the cars to get the same data they have, will allow us to talk back and forth to them. And basically, this will create a paperless system for our department.
So it was a new system? That's, that's what I did not-
Yeah. It's not an old system.
And then, the second question I had was, at the bottom here, lady city manager, I was the answer to this one. It says that the either Panasonic or Pelican mobile computing is on fiscal year '02 nuclear free America, but is there a mobile that's supposed to be on too?
I'm actually going to defer to the city clerk, who's much more well-versed in this than I am.
To the best of our knowledge, in my saying this, within the last six months, there is no more recent data.
And I should also note that the way it works is that periodically, the city adopts one of the lists, the most current list at that point, and then that will continue to be our list until such time as we adopt a new one. We found, particularly at the beginning, that we had to, you know, solidify it at a point, at a point in time so that we all knew everybody was talking about the same thing, because occasionally, companies would move on or off the list. And so, I believe this is the one that we adopted, and at some point, if there is a new one, we could then adopt that. But we continue to use the same list just so we have some simplicity in the, in our dealings with it. Are there a question?
Thank you. Chief Lucucci, you say in your briefing materials that the computers help to enhance the dispatch process. I wonder if you could describe that for me?
Okay, you're talking about the purchase of our portable radio console. Can you move on to that?
Are you, are you talking about this particular purchase? You're talking about the next?
The next one will enhance our radio thing. I'll get into-
You're talking about the console? We're talking about the mobile computers?
I'm talking about item number three, the six mobile data computers.
Okay, you're talking about enhancing the accuracy of the inquiry with, with the information that will be, when we're on the system with Montgomery County, we'll, we'll be able to have access to all the databases, which is basically the record system that's from Montgomery County. And we'll, obviously, we don't have that access now with the enhanced system that we're in the process of implementing to, which is what all these purchases are going towards. We'll be able to get information we weren't previously allowed to get or couldn't get because we didn't have the, these computers will allow us access to all that information.
Okay. But you don't actually dispatch calls through the computer?
Yes, you do. You can actually, on MDTs, you can actually wireless put a message to the officers in the car.
Okay. And that, that's the question I had, that, and I think maybe it's a future agenda item, but do we have a policy for the use of the computers in that way?
There's a, there's a ready-up policy, yeah.
The reason I ask is that the, it seems like it changes the level of transparency to the community by using the computers to dispatch calls rather than using radios?
We're, we're going to continue to use the radios. It allows us to do it. We're not changing the way we dispatch. We're going to enhance our efficiency, which I'll get into in the second part, which is the two go together. But it would allow us to just send a message to a car that we wouldn't want to go over the air.
Right. And that, that's what I'm-
But we're not changing, are we changing dispatch protocol? Not at this point, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
So any other questions? Would someone like to move the ordinance?
Sir, move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council comments on the ordinance? Is there any public comments on the ordinance? All right. Seeing none, this is a single reading ordinance because it's using funding that's already in the replacement reserve. So will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross, aye. Aye. Councilmember Perry. Aye. Councilmember Plague. Aye. Councilmember Seaman. Aye. Councilmember Williams. Aye.
The ordinance passes. The next one, which we kept referring to, is the discussion of the portable radios and the radio console.
The portable radios is a part, as I said, like the MDTs, a replacement, which we will do each year. Portables have a life of around five to six years, and then they need to be replaced. And by doing it on this basis, we'd probably be able to continue to do five or six each year, and we'd never be in a position where we'd come before you with twenty or twenty-five of them at a time, which I've seen happen in other departments. So what we've done this year is we're on a schedule which we will continue to do each year, because we had had money in the equipment replacement fund that has been put forward before, but we will now do it on a yearly basis, which I think is a more economically sound, physically way of spending our money and keeping the equipment replaced, not getting into a position where all of a sudden we have to replace a bunch of portables. More than five would be, would obviously be a bigger expense.
Carrie, again, and then really?
I would like to move the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I would like to-
Oh, you had a question too? All right.
I would like to ask if, what provision's going to be in this purchase to allow for the changing off of the eight hundred megahertz to a different frequency, which I understand is being contemplated because of radio interference?
I, I know that, that the county is working on that with the, I believe, Nextel that was causing the discrepancy between that. And my understanding of that is the, the change will be done at its, at Nextel's expense to the, to the entire system. So the system should be able to be reprogrammed.
One effect is financially, at this point.
It shouldn't be-
That's the, that's the concern. I'd just like to make sure that that's verified before you purchase the system.
Well, we've already got, you went a little faster. Let me explain the console so you understand where that has at. Not that I don't want you to prove it right away, but the console, what we're going to, and why we're going to it at this point, because it goes into some things you've asked me to look at, is that right now, I have had discussions, and it was one of the things you had asked me when you hired me, to look at future them taking over our dispatch. And I've had extensive discussions, and I can tell you right now, there is no plan, there's no attitude towards it, but if it happened down the road, it would at least be a two-year program before they could even take it over. We are having discussions, and there's been no interest on their part to take it over, to be quite candid with you at this point. But we continue to discuss it as late as last week. I spoke with two supervisors, along with Denise, concerning it, and it would take a major financial commitment on their part to hire more people to be able to take it over.
If you put your papers on the microphone, it sounds like-
I'm still learning that one. So we have been holding off on doing this. By not doing this, we've kind of hurt ourselves in the sense that there's an enhancement. Let me explain some of these enhancements. One, there's an emergency panic button on our portable radios and our car radios. Right now, when our officer pushes it, it's monitored in Montgomery County's dispatch center. Most of the time, it works and they call us, but there have been occasions where it hasn't worked to our advantage, and our officer's pushed the button and he didn't get any help. It'll be in our dispatch center when our two dispatchers can see it. It's, it's a safety thing for our officers and for our dispatchers. Secondly, when a unit transmits now, we will be able to identify who's transmitting. Let's say an officer comes on the air, and it has happened before, screaming, yelling, he needs help, or he's been injured and can't speak, or mumbles, as our officers sometimes do in a panicked situation. We will now be able to know what radio it is and who the officer is immediately, which will enhance safety. Let's say an officer's on a call with a citizen and something goes wrong, and this has happened, where we don't know who's speaking on the air. Immediately, we will know who the officer is and where he is because based on where we had sent him. So that's the second thing. The dispatcher's transmissions, currently, when we speak on our radio, if I come on, I can cover the dispatcher if I get to the mic before they press the button. With this system, which is much more important, you want your dispatcher to have priority. When they speak, they will cover everything because they'll have the message that's most important in most cases. They will have the priority, so you can't cover our dispatch. Let's say our dispatcher's giving out an emergency call. A lot of times, guys and gals get back in the car and fail to realize what may be going on and cover them, which can hurt getting a call out quicker. Fourthly, gives us tactical replay. Let's say there's something said on the air, and we're not sure what it was. Our dispatcher now can, it's like a playback of a TiVo, that's the best way I could discuss it. We can play it back in here exactly what was said, which will help us in helping to serve our citizens. So that's- So that's the fourth enhancement we have with it. We have saved money by waiting, in the sense that the original one was going to be $90,000. We don't need something that big. What we're getting now is at $50,000, will give us the equipment for two positions, is what we want. And we're saving money, but we're getting an enhancement. I think the enhancement's important for citizen safety and officer safety to go forward. Does not stop us in continuing to review with Montgomery County and coming up with a final report, which I will eventually submit to you all, what the pros and cons are of switching to Montgomery County's radio system and should we do it. But right now, from a safety standpoint and knowing what the timetable would be, I think it's important to provide the best equipment for our officers, which will better serve our community and from the safety for all involved.
I thank you for the additional information. I leave my motion as...
I wonder if I could just quickly follow up with something that came up in your answer to Councilmember Siemens. The issue of using Montgomery County for dispatch wasn't ever their idea. It was something that was raised in our resident task committee, and it was proposed to the council as, we're not getting compensated for doing dispatch, because Montgomery County has maintained that they could dispatch for us with no additional cost to them. And so it's more of a question of, all right, if you can do it at no cost, then we will talk to you about doing that. In the process, in the very preliminary discussions that have been had so far, it appears that it might actually cost them something. But I think the council was quite interested in having sort of a plan, or an option, or a procedure, whatever you want to call it, come back to the council, so we could actually look at it and see which was the most cost-effective way of doing it. It may be that the council would decide to stay with what we have, but in the process, we might very well educate the county as to the cost that they incur by doing that, and it might give us some opportunity to negotiate with them about the rebate that we get. On the other hand, it could turn out to be the best for everyone concerned, and we could decide to go that way. But I think we need to continue to follow it, even though they are not, I would agree with you, I think once they knew that we were serious, their interest in it waned considerably. But that's the point at which we should perhaps press ahead and make sure that we know exactly what would be involved in doing that, what it would cost them, what it would cost us, and how it would happen. So just wanted to make sure that you understood the background.
Yeah, I know where the, I read the original report, and it was one of the things the city manager had discussed with me. And that's why I bring it up tonight, to let you know that this is not, we're not continuing ahead. We're doing something to maintain what we have and to improve our service, with the same time looking at what we have to do down the road. Because it's not just dispatch that affects, affects how we operate and things that go on when you have a dispatch center, what will we need to replace. And there's more issues than just the dispatch center that come into play, which I will put in a report once we get to it. Right now, they're in a matter of changing command staff in Montgomery County. I'm anxious to see who's going to remain. And having that at the top, and I've had discussions with the chief, I've had discussions with the majors, and we'll continue to discuss it. But I want to give a final report, and I'm still looking at some other issues that affect us within the internal department, of our department.
So if I could just, I appreciate that. If I could just clarify that you're saying that even if we were to go to dispatch through Montgomery County, this would still be necessary in the interim for us to continue on with the service that we would have, given that it would take a while for the changeover, even if we decided to proceed?
Right, and that's the reason I bring it for tonight, and I put that out there, because even if we decide to go, I see it as at least two years, and possibly three, with another budget cycle, knowing how Montgomery County's cycle works. I think it's important that we improve the service to our citizens, and officer safety is to any police chief, the number one thing. But this one is both officer safety and citizen safety. We're going to enhance the safety of our officers that are in the field and with our citizens, and I think that improves the service we provide in the meantime. We also would have a system that if Montgomery County took over, there's always a backup system, and we'd have a good backup system in place.
Okay, I appreciate that. Okay. Colleen, is it?
I can't believe anybody mumbles when they panic. I scream really loud when I panic. So I was fine with it, and then all this brought two questions to mind. One is about the 911 issue. You dial 911 and you get the county, and then they have to transfer you. And I wonder if there's any capacity within this to change that? Does any relationship to this at all?
No.
And the thing that I got concerned about after you explained everything is that this is only five portable radios. Is that enough to provide all of the officers with the panic, you know, the panic button response?
We already have...
Only five guys get protected, and the other 25 get up and done for themselves?
We already have the panic button. Where with this enhanced system, all the buttons will work. These are just, the portables are just a continued turnover.
I see.
The buttons we have now could only be received by Montgomery County. With the new system, we'll be received by us.
Console that allows it to receive, okay.
Right, great.
One observation and one question. As you were discussing about the various positions and reactions of people about possible turning over of dispatch to the county, I did just want to add, just in case you didn't have this little piece of it, that on a number of occasions, the former county chief administrative officer basically said, bring it on, we're ready for you.
That's incorrect, okay?
I know.
That's incorrect.
That's what I'm hearing from you and from your colleagues in Montgomery County. But I just wanted to let you know that from the top, they were saying, makes sense, we can take you. We've got the capacity, come on over.
That's why I think we felt we needed to follow through and make sure...
Right, so it's like, well, hey, they'll take us. We should consider going there.
Well, let me just follow up. The night you swore me in, Major Tracy was here, the first word, and is a, I've worked with for years, the first words out his mouth is, we don't want you. And he's in charge of dispatch. I mean, it's an issue, it's easy for somebody to say something politically, okay? I'm telling you right now, make it happen, it's not something that's going to happen overnight.
I hear you.
And it has great impact on them, but it also has an impact on how we do business here, which I think is important for you all to realize.
I heard that and understood it implicitly. I just wanted to let you know that we were getting that political message, that it was a go.
And of course, the next time we enter into negotiations with the county about our rebate for police services, obviously, everything you found out in the interim will be used in that discussion.
And I'll be more than glad to testify at that point.
And the other question that I think you may have answered, but I'm not sure, is in the eventuality that we did decide to go to the county for dispatch, and we did have this console, and it wasn't outmoded, outdated, obsolete at that point, is it something that we would keep, or is it something that they could use?
I think I just previously, we would use it as a backup system.
That's what I heard you say.
Because there's always the possibility, the other system would go out, and things go wrong, we'd have a system we could put up within minutes, because it'd be right there as our backup system.
So your sense is that there wouldn't be any reason either for us to get rid of it or for them to want it?
I don't think they would want it. They have enough consoles. The question is, do they have enough personnel? And are they ready to take it over? Because they'd have to change their SOP and how they operate there.
Okay.
I mean, we have enough calls that would impact asking for more dispatchers, which right now, I know the priority in Montgomery County, in talking with their chief, is obviously more officers and more investigators to deal with gangs, which is a big thing in their budget this year.
Okay, thanks.
You didn't answer the 911 part of the question.
My answer was no. It doesn't, it's not involved in anything we're doing.
Okay, are there other questions? All right, this has been moved and seconded, I believe. Are there any additional council comments? Are there any public comments? All right, this is also a single reading ordinance. Oh, I just wanted to note for the record that, as mentioned in the cover sheet, the waiver that we voted on, the Nuclear Free Zone Act, for covering this entire system covers these additional purchases also. Since this is a single reading ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Perry.
Aye.
Councilmember Plaids.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Okay, the ordinance passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next is the second reading of the ordinance that would authorize payment in lieu of taxes for 8508, 8510 Flower Avenue.
Move the ordinance.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We did discuss this a couple of times, once in Work Session 1 of First Reading. Are there additional questions from the council? Yes, Ruby?
Just a point of information. On the page two of the ordinance itself, Part G, it has some percentages. Explain how those were arrived at.
Those, the percentages that Councilmember Seaman is referring to are the second whereas, or now their force in the ordinance. And it breaks out by unit number, how the income limits will be distributed among the units in the building. This breakdown was established by the county, which is lending MHPD money for the acquisition and renovation of it. And basically, what it boils down to is that two of the units will be occupied by families, assuming a family with four members, and by individuals with roughly $28,000 of annual income. Three of the units, again, assuming a family of four, would be occupied by someone who earned less than, or had an income of less than 37,800. But a majority of the property, or, excuse me, a majority of the units would be occupied by individuals with incomes of roughly 56,700.
All right. Would someone like to move, is the second reading, you've moved it? Okay, somebody like to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
It was previously moved and seconded. We already have that.
I'm sorry. Okay, okay, all right. Well, people have better memories than either. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council comments? Are there any public comments? Since this is the second reading of the ordinance, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Perry.
Aye.
Councilmember Plaids.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Ordinance passes at second reading. The next item on the agenda is the ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for services for the Ethan Allen Gateway Design Charette. Would like to move the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We have discussed this one. Are there any additional questions for staff? Any council comments? Any public comments on the ordinance? All right, seeing none. Again, this is a single reading ordinance. We need the roll called.
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Perry.
Aye.
Councilmember Plaids.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
That ordinance also passes. The next one is a resolution that revises the open space allocation. And these two, the next two are linked.
Could you elaborate, Mr. Gener?
Yes.
Fairly simply speaking, the council had first authorized the city to go ahead with the annual program request, a program of open space for the 2007 fiscal year allocation. That was over a year ago. Since that time, when we've gone out to bid for actual design costs for one aspect of the project, which had included both the community gym, as well as the Jackson Boyd playground design, we have gone out to bid for the design services and found the cost to be higher than we originally anticipated. So we thought we'd take the opportunity to bring it to council and amend the original resolution, since the original resolution names very specific dollar amounts attached to each project. So we thought we'd clarify what we needed out of these funds for this next year. To program open space, they tend to have a fairly more flexible understanding of the time lag between when you originally submit and when you're actually going to spend the funds. So they don't have a particular problem with the allocation or how we want to spend it. But since we have gone on the record with the council and the resolution and very specific dollar amounts, we thought we'd amend it.
Right. Are there any questions from the council? Basically, what we're doing is changing the allocation to provide a little bit more money for the Jackson Boyd playground design, and taking it out of the money allocated to the gym. Move the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, I think, all right. You're right, it needs to be moved and seconded. Any additional council comments?
I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Darla for all the work she's been doing on getting this together, so we could have a good community meeting for it. We've been waiting for the design consultant to come on board and everything, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, have you had any public comments? All right, seeing none. This is a resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the resolution passes. And the next item is the ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract for the playground design.
Yeah, the aforementioned bid. We did advertise this as a city procedure for a request for bids for the design, received two proposals back. The vendor that offered the lowest cost is very highly recommended, and we're very excited to have the opportunity to work with her. She's done a number of projects in the area, both in Virginia as well as DC and Maryland, very familiar with the community process in terms of getting input and community involvement. She's been out to the site and sees some potential for challenges with ADA, given the slope of the park itself and its dire needs to be updated. We have out-of-date equipment and out-of-date access. So she's excited about the project. We're excited about arranging a contract with her, and I look forward to moving this along.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments from the council? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Again, this is a single reading ordinance, so will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Ross, aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Perry.
Aye.
Councilmember Plaids.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaman.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
The ordinance passes, the single reading ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
The council will take a very short recess, since we are running a little bit behind, and then we will move on to our two Work Sessions.
We have folks here to give us a briefing on the Crossroads Farmers Market. This is a very exciting new project that is in the great spirit of Tacoma Park innovation. And I think Doug and I have had some conversations with the folks that have been pulling this together, and I'm really excited about it.
I'm John Hyde, 1114 Merwood Drive, Tacoma Park. With me is Michelle Burnett, who is the coordinator of this project, and she's going to give you a brief overview of what the project is about, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about the project. Some months ago, we responded to a call for grant proposals from the Project for Public Spaces, which was offering grants for innovating farmers' market ideas to improve participation in farmers' markets, improve the diversity of them. And we submitted a proposal, which originally was for $40,000 and has since grown to $60,000. And we were given a grant, which is the largest grant that they have given in the three-year history of the program. In addition to that, we've received $10,000 in additional funding from the Wallace Genetic Foundation. The project is, sort of has a lot of moving parts, which Michelle will tell you about, but it's very exciting to be in the Crossroads area of Tacoma Park in my own Ward 6. And it's very exciting because we felt that this was a community that, the Tacoma Park Farmers Market, which is a big successful market, but we felt that this was a community that we underserved, and we wanted to give people in that area access to fresh fruits and vegetables, and to offer then the advantages of shopping net at farmers' market. So that's what we were about, that's what the grant proposal was about. And I'll let Michelle talk to you a little bit about how the project is set up and what we're trying to do.
So in February of this year, the Project for Public Spaces, with funding from the Kellogg Foundation, awarded a grant to the city of Tacoma Park and the Tacoma Park Farmers Market for $60,000 to start the Crossroads Farmers Market project. And the Crossroads Farmers Market project met the goals of the Project for Public Spaces and Kellogg Foundation to help support farmers' markets and make farmers' markets in diverse areas more community-centered. And as John mentioned, we're both vendors at the Tacoma Park Farmers Market on Sundays. And when we saw this request for applications, we started thinking about our market and how we could better serve the diverse residents of Tacoma Park. So the Crossroads Farmers Market project has three main pieces. The first piece is to open a new satellite farmers' market in the Crossroads area of Tacoma Park. The new market will be held on Wednesdays from 3:00 to 7:00 in the evening. The market location will be 7676 New Hampshire Avenue, in the space just adjacent to the parking lot of that office building. We are working to recruit vendors who we feel will reflect the diverse international community that we have living in the Crossroads area. About 40% of the vendors at the new market, you'll recognize from the Sunday market, but the other remaining 60%, we've recruited from all over the region. We have some experienced farmers and food entrepreneurs who are immigrants to the US. We also have some new farmers who will be, who had their first farmers' market experience with us at the Crossroads, which is really exciting. The second part of the project is to purchase and implement a wireless, what's called point-of-service terminal, which will allow us to accept food stamps via electronic benefits transfer at the farmers' market. We're working with the USDA on this, and we have been authorized preliminarily by the USDA as the first two farmers' markets in the state of Maryland, and I think one of them, some of the only farmers' markets in the mid-Atlantic region to operate this system and to have the ability to accept food stamps. So it's really exciting, and the USDA is working very closely with us on this and looking to us to develop a model that can be replicated across the country. So it's very exciting for us and for Tacoma Park. And the third part of the project is the grant funds are allowing us to create a micro-loan fund, out of which we can make small loans to limited resource farmers and food entrepreneurs to enable them to participate in direct marketing in farmers' markets.
I should add that we want to express our thanks to the city for its help in establishing this project. The city is serving as our fiscal agent, because the Tacoma Park Farmers Market is not a 501(c)(3). And we're especially grateful for the help that Sarah Gaines and her staff have given to us in getting this set up. And we're really excited about this project. It's really great, because it's, we think it's innovative on a lot of different ways, and it's going to enable new farmers, immigrants, minorities to participate in direct marketing for the first time. And that's going to be greatly to their benefit. And also, we're excited about the ability to take food stamps, and we will, of course, take WIT coupons, which already are accepted at the Tacoma Park market. But we're at 7676 New Hampshire, also happens to be the site of a WIT clinic, which has 6,500 clients. So, and they get a special coupon specifically for farmers' markets, which is going to be exciting. Right now, in the state of Maryland, only 50% of the WIT coupons are redeemed, and we're excited about increasing that participation in that community, where, which obviously has a lot of nutritional needs, and we're, it's, I think it's a win-win for everybody.
I think, I think this is really an innovative idea. It's not just a win-win, it's a win-win-win. I mean, it's providing fresh fruit, fresh foods and fruits and vegetables to people who live in the area. It provides a living to a small, many of them immigrant farmers. And it also is one of the steps in terms of the economic development of the Crossroads area, so it's, it's doing a great many things. And I would also, you've been too modest to say so, but this has already attracted attention from people at the county and the federal level who represent this area, who have been extremely enthusiastic about it and have offered their support. So, you know, it's, it's.
I had a really nice response to it from almost everybody we talked to about it, gets, gets really excited once they understand the concept of what we're doing. We had really good response from the USDA, from the Maryland Agriculture Department, from the county, and we're exploring other possible things that we can do to expand the program or perhaps innovate in other areas. So it's been, it's been a really good experience for us.
I just thank you for the work that you've put into this, and it's a fantastic idea. It sounds like it's really coming together, and I appreciate that. I wanted to make sure I understood correctly, the food stamp, ability to accept food stamps. You are going to be doing that also in the current market.
Yes, the device is a wireless device, and we're going to get set up to use it at both markets. So it's actually a handheld device, and we can just bring it to our town on Sunday and then to the Crossroads on Wednesday.
Fantastic, and I, I hope you achieve great success with this, and look forward to your expanding that into other neighborhoods such as Long Lake, Laven, and.
The same device, the wireless device, will also allow us to offer debit and credit at the farmers' markets. So you'll be able to take your bank card to the wireless terminal, swipe it, and say whatever amount of money that you want to spend. We'll give you tokens, we'll give you a nickel, that will be in increments of probably $5 for debit and credit, $1 for food stamps. And then you just spend it as you would anything else, as you would spend money at the farmers' market.
Do you anticipate any special needs from the city as far as policing at the site or cleanup after the work?
I think we'll be responsible for our own cleanup. We do want to talk to the chief about security issues in the Crossroads area, but I'm sure that we're, it will be a, I think it's a fairly secure area, and we feel good about the site, but yes, we would want to.
And then the one last question I had, and I asked it when Ms. Gaines was in here a couple of weeks ago, and that is, do you anticipate this to be self-sustaining, or do you plan on seeking grant to support this in future years?
We anticipate that the market will become self-sustaining, just as the Tacoma Park Farmers Market is, through vendor stall fees. Through those fees, they'll be able to pay for the general operations of the markets. As we begin to perceive the benefits of having this funding, as far as our marketing and promotions goes, I mean, it's allowing us to do a lot of extraordinary things that we wouldn't normally be able to do, we may have to think about how to expand our budget in following years. But the general operation of the market should be sustained by, through the vendor fees.
Thank you. We have submitted grant proposals for some additional grants from the USDA, various programs of the USDA, and so that may assist us in being able to expand or innovate in other areas, perhaps to enable us to build in more sustainable features in the program.
Yeah, we're particularly interested in finding additional funding to help with promotions to lower-income areas to food stamp and WIC recipients. It's not just about being equipped to accept their benefits, but they also have to be encouraged or even just aware of the market's existence and what they can buy there.
I'm not sure that you said so, but we are on county-wide cable TV, so you might want to talk about your opening day.
So the first market is set for June sixth, Wednesday, June sixth, and we're planning an opening season celebration for Wednesday, June twentieth, which will be held during market hours. We'll have the usual market activities as well as some other festivities, hopefully some live music, activities for children, and special promotions, as well as special guests from the city, county, and state.
Of course, all of you, we are hoping will be able to come, and we have a commitment from Ike Leggett, who will be there. We anticipate the Secretary of Agriculture, Richardson, from the Maryland Ag Department, will be there, and I'm really pressing hard to see if we can get Governor O'Malley. The man's on his time are really great, but if any of you can give any assistance, let me know. Tom Perez is trying to be helpful, and we would really, really love it if Governor O'Malley could come. I mean, he has a special interest in immigrants and minorities in any case, and I just think this would be a great opportunity for him to point to Maryland Agriculture and point to, you know, the benefits of a farmers' market for this community.
And you alluded to some other additional possibilities that have kind of already started to spin off from this, and I don't want to put you in a position of premature disclosure on anything, but I think they're fascinating enough that if there's anything that you can say about them, I think it would really.
Sure. Let me have you hear from Michelle about the Fresh Checks idea.
One thing we've been considering for promotions to food stamp recipients is to create a program which we've called the Fresh Check Program, and we are seeking funding from the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services for this project. And essentially, what a Fresh Check is, is a dollar-for-dollar match to food stamps spent at the farmers' market up to ten dollars. So if you come to the market and swipe your EBT card for five dollars, we'll give you a five-dollar Fresh Check. And with your Fresh Check, you can redeem with any vendor at the market for fresh fruits and vegetables. So that's one idea that we have in the works.
We don't mean to be premature, but the county has expressed a lot of interest in this because of the nutritional benefits of having access to fresh fruits and vegetables in that area.
And then we'll also be partnering with Montgomery County and hopefully Prince George's County also to come and promote participation in the food stamp program at the market, so that they can pre-screen clients on-site and hopefully accept applications as well for participation in the food stamp program.
And I was also thinking about possibilities with the incubator and the ag reserve.
Right. We have been in discussions with Montgomery County, and they have now set a date for a meeting to gather, together various county department heads, along with USDA, Maryland Ag Department, and the Extension Service, to talk about the possibility of establishing an incubator farm. This is in its early stages, but it's a very exciting concept where, when we take a portion of land that's held in the Montgomery County Agricultural Reserve, which is the largest agricultural reserve in the country, and turn it into an incubator farm, which would have several different sections that various new farmers, immigrants, minorities could then have access to grow and then sell at a farmers' market. And there would be a common equipment pool, which would, which would mean that the farmers would not have to start from scratch in terms of buying their own equipment. We have reason to believe that the USDA is very interested in this concept. Montgomery County is very interested, and if that happened, it would be very exciting. In our agreement of dreams, what we would do is pair that with the possibility of establishing an incubator kitchen, which would then hopefully be located in Tacoma Park, and it would allow low-income people to have access to a commercial kitchen, where then they could start their own food product business at reduced rates for a commercial kitchen, and also allow access to, for farmers to bring their products to the incubator kitchen to be then processed into value-added products. So that would be, that would be great if we could do that. Montgomery County is very interested in that, too, and it's my understanding that they're very interested in incubators in general, but they haven't done much in Tacoma Park, so this is their opportunity.
And this is a great opportunity. A couple of us were at the Montgomery Chapter Meeting of NML that was held in this building a week or so ago with the new Economic Development Director for the county, Pradeep Ganguly, and one of his main messages out of that meeting was, please let people know that we want to do incubators, we're all set up to do it, and we're looking to do more, and just, you know, get those entrepreneurs in here, and let's set up incubators. I think this is a great opportunity.
Well, again, you guys have taken all my questions. I just want to thank you so much for doing this. I just think it's terrific. I've gone to the farmers' market for twenty-whatever years that I've been around and really loved it. Mike Taber's across the street, and he and I talk about this kind of stuff all the time. I'm just so delighted that this is going on, and I'm sorry that my, my original question had to do with whether you were going to start in May, as some of the materials indicate, or June. I'm sorry, it's going to be as late as June.
I think early on, we got a little optimistic about, starting by, the main point of moving it back was, we wanted to make sure that there was stuff to buy there the first time people show up. Because if they show up the first time and there's nothing to buy, then, then they're not going to come back.
Yeah.
But we're, we feel comfortable with the June sixth date. We have some experienced growers that will be there, and there will, there will be stuff to buy, and so we have two fruit growers who will be at the market, including one who is, sells at the Tacoma Park Market, and we feel that fruit would be a very popular item at that market, and we have a number of vegetable growers. We are going to have some prepared food, a couple of prepared food vendors at that market, which Tacoma Park does not have, but we think that they will be popular. Maybe Michelle could give you a rundown on the various countries where our vendors will come from.
We have, let's see, Mexico, Ecuador, Sierra Leone, Cameroon, and the Ivory Coast, and Jamaica.
Do you, have you had conversations with the Safeway and so on there to talk about issues of competition? What's kind of the reaction you've gotten from them?
Our initial hope was that we would, we would be able to establish ourselves in that lot where the Safeway is. The opposition did not come from Safeway, as far as I know, it came from Sawis Centers, which owns that shopping area, and they just turned us down flat and didn't seem open to negotiation. I don't think the opposition came from Safeway. I've had, I mean, I've been doing this for twenty-three years, but I've had various experiences with food stores being receptive to the idea of a farmers' market and alternatively opposed. And it's, I think, small-minded of them not to want to have a farmers' market there because I think it brings in business, because you buy food at a farmers' market and then you go inside to buy cat food and diapers, but it hurts in the reaction. Whole Foods is now actively recruiting farmers' markets at their markets, because they think it's good to promote local food, it's good to promote safe, organic food.
When, when I lived in San Francisco, I worked for the Americor National Service Project, and one of the projects that I worked on was an urban mini-farm. It's called St. Mary's on the backside of Burnell Heights in San Francisco, and it was a youth development project, and they had an herb garden and a flower garden, and the kids sold the flowers at the flower market garden, and the herbs they took, and once a month, we'd go to a commercial kitchen and make herbal vinegars and mustards, and one of the kids designed the label, it was called Urban Herbals, and they sold them at the local fancy grocery stores. It was a great project for the kids. It was a great sort of youth business development activity, because some kids got involved in the farming, but other kids got involved in the marketing, and, and one of the, the first bottles of the Urban Herbals got sold to the, to the mayor of San Francisco at the time. But I think that's something to consider, too. It's, it's a way to involve young people. We rented the commercial kitchen for fifteen bucks for the, for the day. I mean, it was really, it was really cheap, and the kids, the kids really got into it and got into the business development of it, so I think that might be something else to consider, and I think it's a CDBG-eligible activity, because I know we paid for it with CDBG money.
Yeah, well, I'd love to talk to you more about that. We, we do have an interest in developing, developing some sort of urban mini-garden or community garden that would have a youth component to it. We've looked at several different models across the country where a garden has been developed by youth and basically managed by youth, who then take the products that they grow and bring them to market to sell to generate revenue for the ongoing, you know, benefits of that project. So we, one of the grants that we submitted to the USDA recently was to, part of it was to provide funding so that we could explore that, that opportunity a little bit further with the city. I think we've heard some interest from the city in developing a community garden, so we'll see where that goes.
We would love to have the ability to have young people grow and then sell at the market. There's a program in Yenru which is very similar to that, and it's been highly successful.
I just have one thing about outreach, and that is, it sounds like you've been exploring some of the ways you can advertise to people who get food stamps, but I was, I'm aware that in the Montgomery County school system right now, there's parent movement, grassroots movement to improve school lunches, so it, it seems to be a topic of conversation that I, I would think would welcome an announcement from you. So I don't know if you can send it around to all of us, and we can circulate it, you know, do a little viral marketing, but I'm really excited about this project, and I appreciate the work you all have done.
Michelle and John are much too modest. John, of course, is an accomplished baker, as well as a neighbor, and Michelle makes a mean granola that is, is a must-try. In fact, in speaking of Whole Foods, I was in there the other day, and I saw this picture of someone sticking out of the fruit area, I don't know why she was there, but I thought, there's Michelle, what's she doing there? And sure enough, they were, they were promoting your mean granola. So, and of course, John has been so enthusiastic, as has Michelle, all this time, especially in the wintertime when there was some question about whether the farmers' market would have a place. He would come over on Sunday afternoons all excited, he could tell me the latest, and unfortunately, I think he caught me in a nap or two, but I, of course, you know, roused myself and listened attentively each time, and I think that, you know, the benefits for the area are enormous, and many of them have already been discussed tonight, but a, but a couple of ones that I see is, or are, that it's, it's really a gathering place for the community in a, in an area that doesn't have many, where people are hopping buses or rushing for their lives across the busy intersections. This gives people a chance, even for four hours a week, to come together. Many of the people who live in that area, of course, are quite familiar with open-air markets from the countries they came from, so this is really sort of a perfect opportunity for them to, to share that experience with their neighbors, and also importantly, for people who are not so familiar with open-air markets, who live back in the residential area of Tacoma Park, to come and meet people in that area who they normally would not have an opportunity to rub shoulders with, let alone actually meet. So I think that's going to be a very important gathering point for people from across the area. And then you mentioned, you know, mixed steps, but it also seems, when you were talking, the image of the stall, food stall culture all over Southeast Asia, and it might be that that is the appropriate evolution, not the marble, you know, faux food courts that we know downtown, but, but a place that would have much more character than that and could be, could be created with, with not a huge budget. We're having, of course, this transit center put in over there. Wouldn't it be an interesting idea to, to think of, perhaps, a food stall court could be part of that center with cuisine in a community kitchen from a number of different places, so be sure to keep that in mind. And then the other dimension of this that's important is the community education forum that it will provide, where people who come will get information on nutritious food and eating and other health information that county and others will, they won't be hit over the head with it, but it'll, it'll just be there. It'll be part of the experience of shopping in this place, and I think that will be a big opportunity for people whose diets are not particularly healthy right now. Maybe it's financial, maybe it's just tradition, and here's an opportunity to learn some things about how to feed their family in a way that will be very helpful for them. And of course, I would be remiss in, in not thanking again Sarah and her office for providing the framework for this, but also a lot of the technical, some of the technical assistance that you've needed, and ongoing support, whether it's a sign out in front or assistance coordinating city services, you'll get all of that and more. So thanks, and we look forward to the opening.
Thank you. Just a quick comment, that we will have one stall available at the market that we hope will be occupied on a weekly basis by some sort of community organization providing social services, such as Casa de Maryland's Nutrition Program, so people can come in and share information, it'll be a good community forum.
Well, thank you so much for coming and giving us all, all this good information, and I certainly plan to be there for the grand opening on June the twentieth, and I hope many of my colleagues are able to get there, are there also. It sounds like you've got, can have quite a celebration.
If you have any questions or comments, feel free to contact us anytime.
Give the politicians a time, a deadline for getting out of there, so they don't overstay their welcome and push the farmers.
Have a laugh there.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Very much appreciated, and all the work that you've done and all the creativity you've used in pulling this together, thank you. The final item on our agenda is a discussion of the bids for the proposed auditorium renovation.
You all know Charlie Pelzer from the Asian Humanities Commission, who is joining us tonight and is my partner in crime in helping get us going on this project. It's been great fun working together so far, and we're looking forward to many more months of work together. As you see in your packet in front of you, you would call at the beginning of March, the Asian Humanities Commission asks that you get the staff to work on an RFP to conduct a feasibility study for renovation of the space we're in, so that it can be used for council meetings such as Orange United, for a greater level of performing arts and, and other activities, all keeping in mind easy telecasting. So as, as you directed us, we have issued an RFP and reviewed three very qualified responsive proposals, and have decided to recommend the MTFA, and the city clerk is, at the city manager's request, I pulled some information about the architecture firm off of their website, so it's not pretty, it's just the text from their website, which is actually quite pretty, and you may wish to go visit it, but in any event, it gives you some sense of the firm, some client list, and some of their verbal behavior about themselves. But as you know, the RFP requested, described a scope of services in three phases, and the current project is to engage in phase one only, which is the feasibility study, but we identified that there, should we decide to go forward after that, there would be a phase two to have the architectural firm work. Phase Two to have the architectural firm work with staff to develop the bid documents and all the specificity required to hire contractors to do the construction. And that Phase Three would be the supervision of those contractors, assuming we go forward, of course. What questions do you have for us? Or maybe Charlie would like to add something.
Well, the only thing I wanted to add is, as was discussed back in March, with the resolution from the Arts and Humanities Council, is that Tacoma Park is the center of arts, performing arts. You know, there's a lot of musicians, poets, writers. And there's an interesting dearth of performance spaces in Tacoma Park. And this room, you know, is a prime opportunity to provide such a space. In addition to being one of the principal contacts of the citizens of Tacoma Park with you, the mayor, the council, and the city, that, you know, they see the council chambers as one place. And it just seems this is a good opportunity to provide a facility, both for the city governance aspects, you know, your meetings, the other meetings, planning meetings or hearings, and provide a performance space. My own estimation is that it will become fairly heavily used. There just aren't a whole lot of little 200-seat theaters available.
Well, I, Charlie, I wanted to say I very much appreciate your being involved in this. I remember talking to you after that meeting in March, and very much appreciate somebody who has your experience in actually looking at these kinds of things and can bring that professional experience to this project, so I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I don't really have any questions at this point. I'm, I just, I guess the best way to say it is I'm not supportive of this contract. I have, I don't see the real benefit to the city of spending $28,000 just to figure out what we want to do, and then have additional money we have to spend to, for future design of what we're going to do, and then the actual money to do it. I think we, and again, I, you know, we're looking at spending this money for this facility here while we're still frustrated and not even being able to move forward on building the gymnasium, which was the number-one priority, or is the number-one priority from my perspective for additional expansion in the community center. And this, you know, I certainly agree that, you know, small performance spaces are really needed in this area. I know that the Tacoma Theater had filled some of that for a while, but they're, I think, not, no longer in operation. But I just, I don't think, I think for $28,000, we could turn this into a small performance space without having a whole lot of study. I think it could be something where we do have the, a facility. It might not be the, the top-notch performance facility that we'll get by spending all this kind of money, but I think it's big enough that we could have a community performance space that would be well utilized. And anyways, that's kind of the struggle I'm having, and I have difficulty supporting this, not because of what's in here, it's the amount of money for, and where I see the priorities are for community center activities.
I guess I understand your frustration, but I think it's money well worth spent at the beginning to make sure that we understand where we need to go, what the possibilities are, what we can do, and not just kind of take the money up front, spend it, and then realize that it wasn't spent wisely because we didn't understand the implications. Because I kind of feel like I started down that road in wanting to do the, what I thought was comprehensive and simple and cheap, and turned out not to be, once you start getting, peeling back all the layers. So I'm supportive of this. I wish it didn't cost $28,000, but there was a process, we got bids, that's what it appears to cost. I'll support if we go forward.
I support the proposal. I think it's really going to expand the functionality of the space. I've lived in a few small towns, and one of my favorites was Santa Cruz. And they had a, they had a community space in the center of town that was a theater. It was larger than this, but they had twice as many people in their town as we did. But it was, it really became a great gathering space. And I think in some ways, having the space allowed them to really expand their idea of what they could do together as a, as a community, and I enjoyed that. And I also worked in the, in the theater from the time I was in high school until before I moved out here four years ago, as a musician and on the stage crew, in several theaters in San Francisco and down in Southern California. And, you know, there's a big difference between a well-designed theater and a not-well-designed theater, and how functional and easy it is to do things. And I think I agree with Bruce that we really, it's important to get it right. It really is. I know $28,000 is a lot of money, but I spent $2,800 to get just like a map of my, of my basement done. It's just expensive. And this is a big project. It's a lot of different kinds of users, where we really have to understand the various needs and be able to integrate them. And I think it's worthwhile.
I support the renovation also, but I have, I find it a little shocking, I guess. This is a seven-week feasibility study, according to the notes here, so that would make it $4,000 a week that's being spent. I mean, I got my house renovated for $2,000 a week a few years ago.
That was a few years ago.
It was a few years ago. You're exactly right. So maybe $4,000 is right. But all we're getting is a feasibility study. We're not getting preliminary design materials, we're not getting options. I hope you will address this. Feasibility, to me, doesn't really seem like it's going to provide, well, we could do this, or we could do that.
Actually, that's specifically what has been asked, and perhaps feasibility study is a misnomer. The RFP, which is attached to your packet, elaborates on Phase One at some length, including description of what we want, what we're, what we think we want, and how we're currently using it. But it, we are looking for alternatives and costs for those so that there would be plans. In other words, if you spent, and I'm going to use really fictitious numbers, $10, you would get this, and if you spent $50, you would get that, and if you spent $80, you would get that. Or maybe if you spent $10 this year, you could get that, and $50 this year. Or if we just painted, you know, and put new carpet, that would cost this much, and, you know. So these are the kinds of, we're looking, we have looked, let's say, we have asked specifically for creative solutions to allow us to do the things that are on the list in here. So it's not just a, it's more than a feasibility study, it's kind of a inadequate phase.
Can I ask if Mr. Pelzer would address that also? I know you've had some experience with this.
Yeah. What if, when we read the proposals and interviewed the firm, that was actually specifically one of the things that we asked, was about the results of the study. You know, in a feasibility study, you can answer, well, yeah, if you can renovate this. I mean, that's an answer. It's really coming up with a design idea, winnowing down to what could you get for certain expenditures. You know, if you drew a curve and you say, as Lonnie pointed out, if you spend a certain amount, either incrementally, some this year, some the next year, some the next year, what can you get? Or if you spend this much this year. And it can be everything, you know, from a full-blown fancy state-of-the-art thing to, well, let's put some new carpet in, let's paint, maybe let's install a little bit of new wiring to make transforming the space easier, from, you know, always keeping in mind that there would be one thing to simply change this place into a small auditorium. It would be easy to do, but it wouldn't fulfill all the functions, particularly the functions that council needs. You know, the idea of being able to easily set up to have council meetings, which is one of the principal uses of the space, you can't discard that. And just sort of saying, well, let's just, we'll build a little extension, and let's go with this, kind of leaves all of the purposes unfulfilled. And so that, as just a feasibility study, yes, it's probably expensive, as the first part, coming up with a design. Now, it's not a detailed design in that you can issue construction documents, but it is the conceptual design, that here is what we're going to go forward with, and to give council and staff something really to evaluate, saying, is this something we're going to go forward with?
I don't exactly recall the amount we spent on the concept designs for the gym. Does anyone have that figure in mind?
Yeah, I can help you count from Brosston Lane. The initial contract with ANCL was for approximately $40,000. If you'll recall, we then had some additional options, so the final amount, I believe, was in the range of about $50,000.
Okay. Well, my, my feeling about this is it's one step closer to completing this building. And we undertook this project, it was ambitious. We've had Phase One and Two, and I really want to see it through. I think renovating this room will also show our commitment to the arts, and it is already used for all of the purposes described in this RFP. I've been to plays here, I've seen dancing on the stage, I've been here for the film festival, poetry readings, there's been just a multitude of artistic use of this room in addition to the weekly council meetings. And I'd really like to see us bring it up to the standard that the rest of the building has now, and better integrate the arts in this facility. I think that it will make the community center more marketable as a venue for arts groups. And right now, we have some smaller rooms, but this really could be the main attraction. I too wish that it didn't cost $28,000, but I agree that it's more important to get the planning done right at the beginning than to be disappointed with the product later on.
I think that special attention should be paid to the acoustic integrity of whatever plans they come up with. I think that you will see a good deal of interest on the part of the musical community in particular, if this room had decent acoustics. I don't think it does now. I think, too, then, that you, we might also want to emphasize the access from the outside to movable objects such as a piano. There's one over there, but I don't think it's been played in a while.
I think there's a reason for that.
I don't want to play it. But, you know, you might want to get a baby grand or something in here for certain purposes. So, you know, this is a very creative community. And on Sunday, I was at my daughter's soccer game, and I saw one of those little poems, poem, it was next to the baseball cage, and it was just really an amazing moment. I turned around from the game, and there was E.E. Cummings, or whoever it was, and I railed a little bit, and I thought, so let's bring it indoors, where it already is in part, but let's give, give the community a decent performing arts space for both music and dance and theater. And as Joy said, let's, you know, get this up to par, let's get it up to the standard of the rest of the building. And I think spending that money, while it is at the upper limit, I think, of what I would be comfortable with, I do think if we get a good plan that is actionable, it would be a step in the right direction.
As a matter of fact, MTFA's proposal includes the services of an acoustician, Kevin Miller is part of the team, and he actually came to the interview. So we were able to speak directly with him and to specifically address that, the need of the acoustics. And quite frankly, part of the cost of the feasibility study is the fact that it's not just MTFA, it's the architectural feasibility firm. There's an acoustician, Kevin Miller, involved. There is a lighting consultant, there is a mechanical engineering consultant to possibly look at HVAC issues.
Good idea.
Not possibly, definitely to look at HVAC issues.
And a, and a professional construction estimator who will work with them as part of the study will be a detailed estimate, you know, of what it will cost to implement the design at the different option phases. So that, in fact, I mean, if you took all those extras out, I'm sure you could do this for less, but you wouldn't get a comprehensive plan.
Did you mention lighting? Audiovisual, HVAC, mechanical, accessibility, and, and design, you know, that finishes the aesthetic appearance as part of that.
I think this is a good idea. And one of the things, I mean, the council has talked a lot about, you know, the process of building, the addition to this building and the community center, and talked about lessons learned. And I think one of the lessons that we learned is that you really need to spend the money at the beginning to know what you're getting into. And you need to get a real firm estimate upfront, and you need to have a clear understanding of what it's going to pay for. And even though I'm not any more willing than anyone else to sort of spend more money than we have to, I think that, I think that we've learned that investing money upfront in a really good assessment of what we need and what we'll get and how much it will cost with really hard cost numbers is worth spending the money upfront. So I'm supportive of this also. And I think one of the things that will give us is we can look at, you know, what it would cost to get a basic usable space, what it would cost to get, you know, the best little auditorium in the area, and whatever we can get in between. And then the council can make an informed decision about, you know, how much money we want to put into it, phasing if that's necessary, and all those other questions. And we will have numbers we can be comfortable with. So I think it's worth the investment.
And Mayor, I'm preparing now a special symphony for the opening of this facility. It's for HVAC and unplayable piano.
Well, I think the HVAC alone would probably be worth it. I mean, I don't know if pushing the existing unit off the edge of the roof is a solution, but.
Can I just add to that symphony that it will also have mumbling police officers?
Okay. Are there additional questions? Okay, well, thank you very much, both of you, for spending the time on this, and I'm very much looking forward to moving forward. I have one additional question. We've got a nice timeline here that goes up through the end of Phase One. Do you have any sense of, from there to, assuming the council decides to go forward, when we would be talking about construction?
It won't be August. One of the realities we may face is that we may want to schedule construction not, gosh, I'm tired, and my allergies are bothering me, I apologize. It may not occur when your recesses are normally scheduled, so we may want to move, you know, there may be a construction phase where we want to move you into another room while we, while we do that. It just may be impractical to reach those. So.
Are we talking fall-ish?
We're talking lighter than fall-ish. But when you think about the realities of the vending process, I'm glad you brought this up, because Ruben brought up the timeframe. The seven-week timeframe is to keep it on track, is try to get information to you in a couple of meetings before you go on recess for August. If we were all on board here, we could actually then authorize them to do Phase Two, starting during August while you're on recess and through September, and then we'll have then we'll have a three-month, is it three months? You know, there's like going to be a window of time when you send out bids, so you have to give the contractors time to respond, you have to have time to get it all together, work it out. So, we figured it was going to take three months, once we had contract bids out on the street, okay, at the minimum. But that was a realistic goal.
So, we're into 2008 for any construction?
So, we're into 2008. We're probably looking, I mean, the timeframe that I penciled in, you know, just trying to play it out with efficiencies in there, would be January, February, 2008 for construction, yes.
Then we could go meet in his Zandu room.
Pardon me?
We'd meet in his, in his Zandu room.
That's right. That's helpful to know.
It would be double booked, I have a feeling.
Any, any additional questions? Any, any additional questions? Okay, well, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. All right, if there's nothing else, we're joined.